Well, I don't like looking at the computer screen right now, but it was, I read as much as I could.
Oh, for your eyes, it's easier.
We call the January Latin Public School Board meeting to order. Opening of the papers on the window over here. Meeting notice was published in the Sydney Sun Telegraph, it was on the website, and all schools and various businesses around town. Uh, Rocco.
Mr. Vennish.
Here.
Mr. Borges.
Here.
Mrs. Ernest.
Here.
Mr. Rushman.
Here.
Mr. Sheemaker.
Yes.
Mr. Wedeman.
Yes.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Here.
And Mr. Jones is here. All right. Mr. Regis? All right. I'm gonna have to turn everything off. Let's keep moving about this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, did we have any communications? Not today.
Okay.
Item 1.4, Board Member Conflict of Interest Statement. Each year, we're supposed to come out with the Board Conflict of Interest Statement. I had printouts, if you have any concern, if you have any conflict of interest, we talked a little bit about this last year. But just, if you have any type of conflict, I have a form for you to fill out, just as a yearly part of what we do as a board. So if you have anything that you could gain financially, or if you have a staff member that's on, or if you're married to a staff member, in Sam's case, we would just ask you to fill that one out, and I'll have that ready for you guys at the conclusion of this meeting.
Uh, organizational meaning of Board Education Committees. We have the Safety Committee, School Improvement, Stating of Crisis, Technology, Transportation, Wellness, Budget Negotiations, and Building and Grounds.
So on the first one, the, kind of the big one is the Budget Negotiations. Currently, we have three members on the Budget Negotiations Team, Chad, Roll, and Dave. We'd like to start with Budget Negotiations Committee, I think that'd be a good first place to start. So any volunteers for Budget and Negotiations? Chad?
Chad.
I'll do it.
Dave.
Dave. Anyone else?
Do you want three on that one?
Yeah, three's probably, uh, probably a really good place for us to be now with budget. This one, we just have several meetings throughout the year, so it's probably the least desirable, but something that I think is, uh, viable. We will be doing negotiations this next year as well.
I could be on.
You will be.
No, okay, a year after.
Yeah, a year after, sorry.
Because, we're okay for next year, it's the year after.
Yeah.
Because it's a two-year.
Or not this year, this fall, but.
Yeah.
Two-year.
Okay.
So that will be Chad, Dave, and Suzie.
Next one is Buildings and Grounds. Currently, we have Sam and Chad on Buildings and Grounds. Do you want to add any others, or would you folks like to stay on Buildings and Grounds?
It's fine.
I'm fine with me.
Curriculum, and then American Civics, right now, we have Ryan, Cindy, and Dave on those. This one is, uh, two, two meetings a year for American Civics and Curriculum as it comes up.
I'm fine with staying on that.
Me too.
Okay.
It's all three of you?
Yeah.
Under Safety, we have Roll signed up for that one, that one could always be a two-person one as well.
On Safety?
Yeah, Safety.
I can do that one.
Okay. On Security and Crisis, it's similar, but in the event we have a disaster or crisis that happens, Sam and Ryan are on there, and both of them have a couple of crosswalks with Safety, so that'd be a good repeat going.
We don't have anybody on school improvement?
School Improvement has Dave.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That was.
I'll change it to anybody. Because it's coming up where we have to go through our accreditation.
Dave, you want to stay on School Improvement round?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, under Transportation, we have Ryan and Sam. Uh, this one is pretty heavy at the start of the year, but then consult role for the remainder, vehicles and kids at school. Um, so Ryan and Sam, if you wanted to stay on that one, that'd be great. We do road call-outs, too, so Transportation's kind of leaning on those folks to help us with school closures as well. Technologies. Yeah. Technology is, uh, is the next one. Ryan, we have you on that one. Uh, it's pretty low-level committee on technology so far, so we're kind of one-to-one and rolling on that one. Are there any changes for technology needs? Um, I think one person's perfect enough for this one.
Will you miss stay on that, Allison, or you want to pair it with me on the other?
No, I think it's great. I mean, yes, I'm doing it. I want Chad on there.
Yes, I should be on my computer then.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
You notice I don't volunteer?
The last one will be Wellness, and Wellness is, uh, pretty much yearly, we have Wellness Committee obligations to look at our wellness policy, as well as our involvement with the EHA. Currently, we have Chad and Suzie on Wellness. You know, last year, we did a lot with the Lunch Program on that, so just as, as need be with Wellness.
I think we have one, one meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe early.
Yeah.
We keep mentioning Chad and Suzie, that's fine.
Suzie's on there, too, just has Chad.
What? What did he say?
On mine, it just has Chad.
I think we added Suzie last year, so that might be an old one, I'll get a refresher, send out with this one. So the committees would appear to be closed, then, I think we're good with that. Okay. Uh, so we'll move on to President, so at this point in time, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. McGlaughlin. So we'll go ahead and open up nominations for the election of the President of the Board of Education, if we can have nominations at this time. She's looking at me. Ask a question? Yeah. How long can each person hold you? I think it seems to be.
I think it's.
Fast, or I don't remember quite sure, I think it's four.
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 Four, even three.
Because then one time, I thought we said two.
It's four. So he can do it another year.
I'm willing to, if you want me to, if you want to request me. Perfect.
I'll have a night.
You got like a quiet look straightforward, that's how you get nominated.
Time's coming, buddy.
I'll second.
Uh, do we have any other nominations for Board President? All right, we'll go ahead and close the nominations for Presidents, and we'll do a road call. Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Sheemaker.
Yes.
Mr. Wedeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Vennish.
Yes.
And that was seconded by Suzie. Okay, so we'll open it up for nominations of the Vice President of the Board of Education. We'll go ahead and open up that now. I will tutor Sam for one more year. I will second that. Right, so we've had a main and second, and is there any other nominations for Vice President? If we will close the nominations and do a road call. Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Sheemaker.
Yes.
Mr. Wedeman.
Yes.
Mr. Vennish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Next one is going to be, uh, well, we're gonna do this out of order, I guess, so we'll do the Treasurer next. For some reason, I have those, um, out of order, can we have nominations for the Treasurer of the Board of Education? It was clearly Chad, right? It is Chad.
You want to keep going? Have a nomination, Chad?
Second. We have one nominated and a second. Uh, any other nominations for Treasurer of the Board of Education? We'll close the, uh, the voting, do a road call. Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Sheemaker.
Yes.
Mr. Wedeman.
Yes.
Mr. Vennish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Who's the second on? Dave.
Dave.
Gotcha. And the, um, we'll now open up nominations for the Secretary of the Board of Education. I'm on that, Suzie.
I second that. Come, I don't get a, do you want to keep going?
Any other nominations for Secretary of the Board of Education? Okay, here none, we'll go ahead and close that and do a road call. Mr. Sheemaker.
Yes.
Mr. Wedeman.
Yes.
Mr. Vennish. Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
And Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to Approval of the Agenda. Do you have a motion for approval of the agenda, Mr. Vennish?
Some of them.
Second. Rocco. Mr. Vennish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Sheemaker.
Yes.
Mr. Wedeman.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, hearings to persons to address the Board. Don't believe we have any doing it. Uh, special presentations to the Board. None? Okay. Student Board Member Report.
I do have it, Ella asked if I would read it, if you guys want me to read it, I can just hand it off. If you don't want to, you practice.
Please present.
Okay. I am not Ella Haley. Um, I'm the sponsor for Student Council. Uh, we have held three official meetings since our last presentation to the School Board. In December, we facilitated a secret Santa gift exchange with the student body and asked all the teachers and staff to decorate the classroom doors to bring in the Christmas spirit to the school. We were able to volunteer the Community Shepherd's Food Pantry on January 4th. Uh, the Honor Roll Intender Project was a big success, thank you to Mr. Jones for gathering all of the coupons and gift certificates. They were given to A.B. Honor Roll students on Thursday during an assembly. We hope we can continue this next semester and also for the upcoming years. We held Winter Formal just this last Friday. We had a great turnout, and it was a lot of fun. We are implementing the Peer-to-Peer Tutoring Program this month. We had nine students so far say they would be, like to be tutored, and fourteen willing to be a tutor. Hopefully, we'll have more, not all students have answered the form, but we will have recommendations from teachers, even if they did fill out the form, recommend them to be tutored. Um, and then for the students that said, I would like to be a tutor, we're going to have administration and teacher approval before they're allowed to tutor.
That was a great idea.
Yes, so there was a lot of like, well, kind of a borderline, but we'll have, um, administration and teachers make that call. Um, they're starting a new study hall, rotating study hall period, so during that time is when we're going to try to do most of the tutoring here in the library, um, you know, whatever they need. We want to make sure we start beginning of the semester, um, so we can help them stay on top of things, instead of trying to catch up at the end. So hopefully, we'll start that Monday as latest. Our annual strawberry fundraiser started last week. Suzie?
Nobody's coming up with me.
Um, we will sell through February 7th, and then hopefully, the deliveries will start mid-February, though the crops and, um, are coming from, or the strawberries are coming from Florida. Treasurer's Report, as of 12/31/2024, our balance is $27.89 and $0.91. Our expenses this month in January were $148.51 for food and flowers for the dance. Uh, we will have a credit coming back to us for $50.97 after some returns of our decorations that were a flop, and it works, or we're sending them back to Amazon. Open Issues, Stu Coe would like to focus on a school improvement project with the student body. We're going, Ella and Shawnee are gonna set up a forum with just some ideas that they would like to see. We've talked about different furniture, um, and we'll try, I don't know what's gonna withstand some of the boys, to make it last longer. They've looked at different ideas from other schools, um, but the expense is pretty high for some of those cube setups. It's more than what we have in our budget, so I don't know if something they want to implement, something they really feel strongly about, they can bring it back to the school, um, and see if they can go a house easy or something on it, but we haven't got that part of the plan yet. Um, but that's all we have so far.
Did your student council do the food drive?
Pardon?
Did the student council do the food drive?
Uh, no, that was National Honor Society. Yeah, that was Shawnee doing that, it was a service project, so. Um, are there any questions that I could answer?
Is it, when I see it, is it NHS or Stu Pearl that's doing the movie night?
That's just One Axe.
Oh, okay.
One Axe is gonna do that, yeah, yeah, that just started, put that out today, yeah, it looks super cool, so we'll do that in the gym with the projector and the new sound system and stuff, so. Um, I guess I won't be, can I be excused? That's kidding.
No.
Uh, we will move on to Order.
Okay, I do, I did write stuff down, I hope I can read. That's, that's the issue. All right. Um, the first one I took was Communication Strategies and Tools for Districts Large and Small. It was very interesting, although it was more of a communication if you're going to do a large product, project, like building an addition or a new school or whatever, to get, to get the communication, but I did eke out some things. Make sure all communication is intentional and important for people to make it a priority to check whatever communication chain that they have deemed is the right one for them, and you can try to, we can try to hit everything. All social media, email, text messages, anything that has the brand of the school on it, you're still gonna miss people. It just is, it, it, it just is the way it is. They also recommend, too, that, that you make some communication personal. Handwritten notes of acknowledgements or gratitude of both, uh, community members, students, teachers, anybody in the, um, in the group. Also, keep, keep your written communication, like in newsletters and stuff, to something that someone can read in about thirty to forty seconds, because otherwise, it's too, some people don't have a lot of time to, to read that, so it's, and I, I get it, and then there are times that I want more information than what's in that little, you know, five-line sentence. Don't let the communication get too involved, um, get to the meat of the issue right away. Don't let go of just, all right.
I have to use your slide for a little bit soon.
Oh, there we go. Second one was Making Dollars and Cents of School Finance with Carl Deets, Matt Fisher, and Bryce Wilson. Um, I went to this one for myself, because the, the budget and school finance is something that I have a really hard time with. I understand it when it was explained, and so as they were explaining it and the, the things they were talking about, I understood it in the instant. I cannot explain to you what they said, because I, it, it, I, I understand it when it's, when Carl's here, and I get it, and if I have questions during that time, I can ask them, I just, it's just not something I, I can regurgitate well. But I'm working on it. Um, the third one I went to was Meetings, A Meeting of the Minds, Getting Closed Session Right. Um, this was put on by two guys at the KSB Law Firm, it was really good. They have an entire, the entire PowerPoint is on their website. And it's, it's good, because even, even in the four years that I've been on the Board, the closed session has changed somewhat, and, they said, there's, they would be surprised if there was even one school in the state that, or one entity in the state that does it right every time. Um, so it's, it's just worth it to know, to get to know what we, what we can with it. I also went to a Spark Data, uh, session. Didn't realize that it did as many things as, as it can do. And I really, once I, once I can see and be on the computer longer, I really plan on getting into, learning more about the program. There's so many, you know, I think it's a strong enough program, if you wanted to, you could set it to start your coffee. I mean, it just is, it's, it's really a valuable program, so I'd like to see us learn more about it. We can, as you're building the agenda, you can send it all out to us, and we can send, send a suggestion, or a, hey, well, what about this? Or what about that, so that it's, the communication is there. Um, the Delegate Assembly, really no changes other than adding, we added two at-large Board Members. They don't have to be from, like a, like if, if I were to resign, they'd have to find somebody from this area. Now that there's two extra Board Members can be from anywhere in the state, so. That is my report.
Any other Board Reports? We will move on to President's Report.
Okay. The Seven Twelve Christmas Concert was held on the 16th, and was well-attended. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Oaks and all of the students and band choir for a job well done. Down in the elementary, they held a Christmas dinner that was on December 18th. I want to say there was probably
Excuse me.
twelve or so people that, uh, fourteen showed up to have that, so. And the Key Six Christmas Concert was on the 20th. Um, again, it was well-attended, and once again, thanks to Mr. Oaks and the kids for doing a great job. We had a professional development today for staff on the 6th of January. There were meetings for staff and work time prepared for the upcoming semester. And the Student Council said the Winter Formal was held on the 10th for grades nine through twelve. We had seventeen students in grades nine through twelve that were on the Honor Roll for the first semester. The Honor Roll was Aubrey Borges, Aubrey Cranmore, Isabella Fisher, Melvin Staub, daily Vennish, Shawnee Gammel, Ella Haley, and Riley Jones. The A.B. Honor Roll were Isaac Barde, Colton Ann Max, Wiggins, Riley Vennish, Brody Turman, Marley Wiggins, Alec Watchhorn, Sidney Fortune, and Cadence Hop. In grades five through eight, we had thirty-six students named in the Honor Roll. The A. Honor Roll was Jason Miller, Reagan Moore, Ramus Philip, Brooks Farricks, Melvin Mitchell, Ashley Rushman, Anzley Murch Cleveland, Cooper Vennish, Paige Farricks, Adley Gooden Moss, Kenan McDaniel, Henry McGlaughlin, Connor Rankin, and Kimmy Raleigh. The A.B. Honor Roll was Wade Ashroll, Victor Lopez, Grayson McDaniel, Levi Raleigh, Esme Vonner, Breckin Cranmore, Hunter LaPage, Michael Mondo, Connor Blankety, Josiah Black, Sky the Draper, Sarah Dunn, Joel Hyatt, Alan Lopez, Keenan Rushman, Lucas Elliott, Alexis Feather, Chase Morris, Slater Newitt, Jaylen Noel, Dylan Schmidt, and Calice Atkinson. Out of those kids, there were five additional kids in grades five through eight that missed the Honor Roll while having a C in one class. There were four students in grades nine through twelve that missed the Honor Roll while having a C in one class.
That's pretty good.
Thanks for listing all the names, I actually, that, that's awesome.
That's all I have, I thought you got this, all right. We will move to the Secret Manager Report. So all our staff are signed up for the, uh, Midwinter Conferences under Vision, Culture, and Instructional Leadership. Um, so the, the Midwinter Conference is a really great opportunity for us to get some professional development from the outside instead of us coming up with something. Um, Staff Breakfast was something that we all appreciated, you know, coming back from break. Uh, the NSGAS testing data, as well as NWOPA, will be sorted and analyzed by our staff to prepare for next semester and address the areas where students need support the most. Um, under Operations, Resource, and Personnel Management, uh, when it comes to safety and effective environments, we've done a lot with our facilities to ensure that they're safe. Uh, their staff met last week to discuss drills, as well as keeping safety first. So we completed a lockdown at the elementary school last week, went really well, so we learned a lot about our building, making sure that we're keeping up on those drills, and we'll complete a lockdown drill here at the high school this month. Or, yeah, probably next week. We'll be with Carl Deets this month to just address our, uh, just financials of the district, uh, just January's a great time for us to start planning ahead. Uh, this month was a high spending month with the, with the phone systems, so that's something to just keep in mind, it's a big undertaking. And hopefully, at the end of this, we'll have a very safe environment for our, for our communication internally. Phones are new, so there's some training to go, to go along with it, and they make some really ridiculous ring phones, um, so that, that was something new and fun to see. Um, so yeah, this is definitely kind of a more spendy month for us, and we anticipate, um, that change not to be made for quite some time now, phone systems, water systems, fire systems, all of those things. Um, Board Governance and Policy, I'm signed up for the NERSA Legislative Conference, as well as their Annual Conference. Uh, the Annual Conference is something that Board Members are encouraged to attend, uh, it's in Carney, it's in March. So if you're interested in, um, the NERSA Conference, more focused on rural schools, um, and, and, yeah, lots of, lots of people go with the Boards to NERSA, so if you're, you're interested, I'd love to know who will be going.
Do you know what the date is in March?
Yes, I do, I'm just taking a second to, uh, get that.
Nineteen twenty, I believe.
Yeah. Can I have it?
Thank you.
I have it.
It's actually twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Wednesday.
Yep. All right. We'll, we'll travel on the nineteenth, and be in the, in the conference for the twenty, the twenty-first. They do have a Seven Habits of Highly Effective People training that, that's gonna go on during the pre-session, that's something I will, near, near my heart, um, so if you're interested in going to that, Seven Habits is a, a free training, um, this year. I, I think Sam, um, what's his last name, Stedtr?
Oh, yeah.
He's, he's working with Frank McCovey now, and he's a really, he's a pretty funny guy, so I'd imagine he'd be a terrific trainer of the Seven Habits. Um, so if you'd be interested in going, I highly recommend going to pre-service with the Seven Habits, and I'm gonna get retrained on that as well, it's just a good training for, for everyone. Under Communications and Community Relations, uh, communication play is ongoing. Uh, we feel we have a good, um, setup for the next semester, for as far as the newsletter and Facebook go. We're gonna be highlighting classrooms in the newsletter this month, so we have, uh, four classrooms that are signed up to, to kind of shout out what they're doing in the classrooms, and we'll continue that going, so we can get everybody on the newsletter. Might make for a little larger newsletter, but maybe tell our story a little bit better, so people have kind of a name with a face, and hey, we're doing a lot of stuff good here. Um, legislation's up and running, um, it's a long session, so we'll need to just watch our activity each week, and just be actively involved in matters concerning our district. Um, I haven't heard tons coming out so far, but it's really early. I just kind of reorganizing everybody and getting people where they need to be. Um, just also wanted to say thank you to those early adults for their work, um, with the candy and nutbags, as well as Santa for visiting the school before break, um, and I have my lead blog as well on there.
I was gonna let you know, too. Forward School got back in session, uh, one day at work. Bridgeport Public Schools was chosen by some law enforcement professionals to, um, active shooter training, um, and they had us come over, and that was very interesting to watch, and I would highly suggest that we reach out and volunteer to use one of our schools for that at some point in time. Um, Bridgeport School's a little different, where they're, part of the school they added in is pretty clogged, so you don't have the long hallways, but really, it'd be a nightmare situation for an active shooter thing, with that long hallway, so.
Hit all the windows.
Hit all the windows, yeah, so, and that, just get them here, get them used to our school, so they know what they would be walking into if, if a situation like that ever arose, so. I can get you the guy's name, if you guys want to reach out to him sometime. I don't know how many of those they do a year. I don't know how many of those they do a year, but they do. I mean, your janitorial staff has to be there because there's chalk marks on the wall from the pellets and, but, and they will let you do it if you want.
Superintendent didn't ask you.
I think he got it on the first quarter. He got it on the first quarter. He went around, but anyway.
Well, he's just kind of a slow guy.
It was very, I'd never been a part of one of those and it's, it's impressive. So, I mean, I can talk to you more about that one here too.
Yeah, I saw that on K E B and I was like, whoa, that's, sounds like a.
They've done it at the old Cabella's building. I think they've done it at Sydney Public Schools before, so.
The more people that are familiar with our building, the better for everyone.
Better off we are. Yep. That's the one thing I got out of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I mean, this building even has changed a little bit and says people are graduating to high school and things like that, so it's.
Chicago's a big example. They used to be one of the great.
Yeah.
All right. We will move on to the regular agenda. We do not need to excuse board members today. Special recognition.
All the kids Mr. Jones listed.
And Zaley, we're signing with Dome.
NHS for their food drive, for the food pantry.
Dalton, a girlie that Matt had in here. Any other additions? We have a motion to recognize those.
Bit, oh, student for their NHS project, they did the, the giving tree too. That didn't get.
Ellen Macy.
Yeah, Ellen Macy did the giving tree and ordered toys to all the kids. Very eye-opening experience. There we had, I hadn't been out there before, but the Sioux Army depot has a couple of our kids and that was, that was definitely interesting to see. I'll just leave it at that.
Is it appropriate to thank or recognize the student council for work that they do with community efforts? I think it is.
I'd make a motion to recognize all those people now listed for a special recognition.
Rocco.
Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Do you consider to take action regarding the minutes of December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
To approve.
Rocco.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
And Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Do you consider to take action regarding claims warrants and transfers?
Well, as Matt said, it was.
Expensive months.
Expensive months, but the phones and then pretty significant building. Lawyers for the chat too, so our first big one came in, seven thousand for that, so. It made it thirty thousand higher than normal. The rest of it looked pretty good.
Is, is the bus here yet?
It is.
Yeah, it already broke down.
It's back on the road though.
It's back on the road. They, we had a leaky brake line that we discovered day two, so the company.
Actually a wheel seal.
Wheel seal.
But they actually paid for that.
Yeah, they paid for it. The first thirty days were guaranteed.
Was that Mobius bill a little cheaper than we thought? I thought it was more like thirty, thirty-two.
Yeah, we already, I asked you know that, we've already paid.
A down payment.
Oh, we have, okay, okay. I was, I was looking, I was like, there was another seven thousand, I think.
Chad, if you wouldn't do such a good job, you wouldn't get re-nominated.
Stamps out of ink.
He likes, he likes.
It lasts forever.
I seen we spent money on a camera for the bus.
Yes. Yeah, with the, with the amount of kids on the bus, just in our best interest.
Is that, that's not something he can monitor.
No, but it's something that we can go back to records and so like if there's an issue on the bus, like we've had in the past when the bus camera was down on the old bus, you know, if Sam's running around punching kids, then we can see that.
Not much has changed.
Well, this, this new bus still has seat belts, which has been kind of a good thing for us to keep, like if you have them, you gotta wear them. So it's, they could also be used as a, as a weapon, as we found out, but.
Are they kids wearing them then?
Yeah.
And then the nice thing too is with that camera system, it's also got one that shows the outside, so like the blind spot for kids crossing or if someone, like if he stopped with the arm out and someone passes, it can record.
Who it is.
Who it is and they can turn that in for law enforcement for that.
I like that idea.
And we, I mean, we had an incident with our, our bus call systems. We anticipate some more being done on our CD radios right now, funneling everything through the girly office. But we had a cord that came detached from the tower, so that'll be another added expense coming down the line too, so.
No, they had to check with their tower guy and see if he could climb that.
That's a special guy right there.
Right outside the, by the freezer on the roof that goes up thirty something feet.
Thirty.
And the cable actually snapped about halfway up, so that's why they quit working like instantaneously, so.
Those are scary moments for us too, because we're trying to get a hold of bus drivers and we're not able to get a hold of them. It can be.
Oh, yeah.
A little hairy.
Why make a motion to improve the claims warrants and transferion as per.
I will second that.
On the, on this as well, I do send out the single sheet each month or update it every single month. It, I generally will send an email that says it's updated, but if I don't, it should just be shared in your guys' documents. So before the, before the meetings come up, this, the single sheet should just be updated for every meeting. So we're in a pretty good spot here. Some things that did come in this last time that were pretty great were, you know, state aid, we got two months in a row, so we're up on some revenue there, just because we have two months, but we got two, two months of some federal IDEA money as well. So it's kind of, we're two years of it, so that's kind of fun to, to track over time. And just generally speaking, we're just, we're up about a hundred and ten thousand dollars than we were at last year and, you know, up, up close to two hundred thou, two hundred fifty thousand from, from starting in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. So I think we're in a decent spot financially as far as that goes. It also kind of tracks what we're getting for preschool receipts, so just keep a, keep an eye on that one. You know, we're getting around two thousand dollars each month for our Head Start kids and those are all filled up. And we have a couple on the waiting list for Head Start. And our parents are pitching in about that same amount, so preschool tuition things are going pretty well.
Are people paying like we thought?
Yeah, we haven't had any issues with payment. The first person that we thought didn't pay was me, but I had a receipt. Yeah. I, I had a receipt, so it was all good. So we, we were just really glad that that tag was, I was going to send you an.
Superintendent took the.
So those are, but I'm glad that the first person that we had a question on, you know, had it, so we had that good conversation about how our receipts go out and all of those different things. You know, one thing that, you know, is, is good about it is, you know, Heidi's been really great getting those invoices out. We were, we actually cut our parents a, a deal last month. We dropped the tuition a hundred dollars just because we had two weeks without school. So we felt like that was a good thing for us to offer our parents during the, during the holiday season, so that was nice. I'm sorry, we need a roll call too.
Any other questions or comments? Rocco.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
All right. Do you consider to take action regarding, do you consider to take action regarding the appointment of Matt McGoughlin? As a designated official of the Board of Education with authority to apply for elementary and secondary education act grants and to testify before legislative committees and the district's nondiscrimination compliance coordinator.
I would make the motion to appoint our superintendent, Mr. McGoughlin, as a designated official of the Board of Education with authority to apply for elementary and secondary education act grants and testify before legislative committees and the district's nondiscrimination compliance coordinator.
I didn't hear that, did you?
No.
Have to do it twice.
No.
I'm just kidding. Make two motions.
It's all you, Ron.
Make a motion to, second, roll call.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
All right. Do you consider to take action regarding the mission and vision of Lakeview Public Schools?
So our mission is to cultivate lifelong learners as is successfully transitioned toward a diverse world. And our vision is to embrace community, create integrity, and achieve greatness. We spend all our time and effort on that, but we'd like the board to just put their stamp of approval on our mission statement and mission statement. Or to keep those assets.
I move that we approve the mission and vision statements of Lakeview Public Schools.
I'll second. Rushman, a second. Rocco.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman, yes. Do you consider to take action regarding, do you consider to take action regarding the appointment of Matt McGoughlin? As a designated official of the Board of Education with authority to apply for elementary and secondary education act grants and to testify before legislative committees and the district's nondiscrimination compliance coordinator.
I would make the motion to appoint our superintendent, Mr. McGoughlin, as a designated official of the Board of Education with authority to apply for elementary and secondary education act grants and testify before legislative committees and the district's nondiscrimination compliance coordinator.
I didn't hear that, did you?
No. Have to do it twice.
No.
I'm just kidding. Make two motions.
It's all you, Ron.
Make a motion to, second, roll call.
Mrs. Schumaker.
Yes.
Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman, yes.
Do you consider to take action regarding. Designating legal counsel for the district as Simmons Olson Law.
I have nothing but good luck with John, good guy. He'll give you back what, what you need.
Exactly.
I think we just stay with him, agree.
I would move that we keep them, designate them. I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, roll call.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman, yes.
Do you consider to take action to appoint the title nine coordinator and compliance coordinator as Mr. Jones?
I'll make the motion to appoint the title nine coordinator and compliance coordinator as Mr. Jones.
Second.
Are you currently at two, right?
Second, roll call.
Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman, yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Do you consider to take actions, designating West Community Bank as a depository bank for the district?
I would move to do that.
I will second that. Motion, a second. Roll call.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
And Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Do you consider to take action to designate runner associates as the auditors for the district?
They do great work. I will make the motion to designate runner associates as the auditors for the district.
Second. Motion, a second. Roll call.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Mr. Benish.
Yes.
And now the moment you have all been waiting for. Do you consider to take action regarding your view of policies three thousand through two thousand twenty-one?
I have one, maybe I'm nitpicking, but on three thousand and three, under number two B, prior to solicitation of the quotes and our estimates, the superintendent will determine whether the district will accept oral submissions. I don't, I guess in my mind, I don't see any reason we would take an oral submission. And I'd like to see every quote on anything on paper, just for backing, look at other legal issues we have, whether it's five thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars. I would just like to see every quote we get on paper. So no one can figure out and say, well, that's not what I said.
You get that home cooking or something like that or.
Just anything.
Yeah.
Not that I don't, and it's not the superintendent or board, I'd just like everyone to be on paper for our own protection.
I think that's great. I don't, I can't think of a single company that, that wouldn't be able to do that for us.
Yeah, it was just, I don't know, maybe.
In the policy, dude, we just need to strike B out.
Just take it out.
What, not already?
It's three thousand three.
Three thousand three.
Two.
Yeah.
I don't know, two.
Is advertising for biz.
Prior to.
That's going to cost less than a hundred and nine thousand.
Yeah, so with projects with this may cost less than nine thousand, B is prior to solicitation of the quotes and our estimates, the superintendent will determine whether the district will accept oral submissions. Either just cross that out or all just has to be in.
Yeah, I think, or, I think, yeah, if we strike it, I think that makes more sense than just, because it says the same thing.
Even if it's like two thousand small and they come along, I said twenty-five hundred. Well, no, you didn't. You said two.
Estimation or whatever, a bid on paper.
Just, just put it out so we can see and I think every bid we've ever had has come on paper. I just, I'm thinking for future reference to.
Just say we don't accept oral submissions.
Yeah. Something however you think.
I'd like to give you eighty thousand dollars.
I think we just, we just do everything on paper.
Okay.
Yeah, so all, all bits for projects that are in excess of that five thousand.
On paper, okay. Do, how would you like that motion made or?
I think we'll just take, we'll just note that on our notes for the meeting and we'll strike that. Well, I think we'll probably run any changes through legals first because K S B provides us with the manuals.
Okay.
So that might be something where they, they have it in there, just a simple conversation with them and say, can we strike B?
And they might have a reason we can. Fortunately, I said I'm not nitpicking, but I just thought.
I completely understand your thinking.
So that might be something where they, they have it in there, just a simple conversation with them, and say, can we strike B?
And they might have a reason we can. Fortunately, I said I'm not nitpicking, but I just thought...
I, I completely understand your thinking.
Yeah, it was revised on July twelfth of twenty-one, we reviewed it in twenty-two. So, I don't know what, I wish it would show what, what was revised, so we knew.
I, I think those guidelines are available, but they're, it's...
Oh, it's a mess.
Yeah, three thousand three.
It's not one.
Three thousand.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I learned from all of them, I didn't see anything.
I just have a couple of questions, not about the policy, just a couple of questions. How often do we do a physical inventory?
Oh, good, good question. Um, I, I also looked at that, uh, just today. A physical inventory is supposed to be done over two years.
Is that...
After I looked at that, that is not the practice, so we had questioned people today, um, and said, do we have anything that we can look at? Um, as far as inventory goes, I think there's some areas where inventories are just extremely important, especially if you have like, say we had our groundskeeper, we leave the job, and we thought we had a, like a chainsaw or something like that, like those are, those are the things where I think we definitely need a physical inventory that we don't have right now in some areas.
We don't actually do it.
We, we have not, but we will be doing that.
That's...
That, that was something that's been on my mind a lot, I know technology-wise, it's pretty, pretty common to have a inventory, just because of the high dollar amounts. We also need to have those inventories in place so that we know, hey, these, these, uh, these desks that we have are on broken, broken legs, when's the last time we purchased desks? And we can kind of start looking at those things, so a physical inventory is something that we, um, after looking at the policy, is something that we need to do and have updated. Uh, so I talked with kitchen staff today, um, and, and both secretaries about, you know, we're not looking at every pencil that the school owns, and supplies-wise, but we, we do want to make sure, we have seventeen violin cabinets or something like that. Those are, those are things that we...
Like hurdles?
Yeah.
How many hurdles do we have? People aren't taking a hurdle here and there.
Yes, and I think that those are high-dollar items, like we, we should have a physical inventory of our pads that we have, of, of the items in the bus barn, so we have not been thinking for...
Basketball volleyball, because sometimes those closets are open.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a, it sounds ridiculous, but basketballs cost a fortune. They are high-dollar, they are high-dollar pieces.
Uh, I have a question. Do we charge rental fees to any outside groups that may use the facilities, like?
I waived all of them.
Okay. I didn't know if you did.
Yeah, I, I waive them, um, one of the things that we might be a little bit of a weird spot is the bouncy house thing that they do if they need to on Dalton Days. They have asked to use the gym as a sign place on that, that would be something where we, we just go on the, on their insurance for that.
And it said, that was all up to your discretion.
Yeah, I, I hate the idea of bouncy houses, honestly, I would really not like to have that, but I mean, Dalton Days is, it's a big deal for our community, uh, but, yeah.
And with that, if they did it again the same way, the football boys helped with the bouncy houses, and the football boys got a payment from that, so at least it's, I mean, they're trying to help the school, all the school too.
Yeah. Um, I think there was one section in there about the facility rental fee, um, I would like us to look at that again. Um, Bernice came and talked to me one time about, you know, just walking the hallways at early, and one of the areas where, you know, shit at your point, it's like this is kind of the community's building, and, and really it'd be nice to have an opportunity to walk the hallways for less than a hundred and fifty bucks a year, and I agree with her. Um, I know that the majority of folks see the weight room as, you know, like, that a hundred and fifty dollars was supposed to keep, I, I think, to keep it under control and nice and tidy. Um, we haven't had really anybody mess up the weight room or anything like that, so just looking at how we can incorporate, um, the, the usage of our buildings, because I, I know people would use it if we didn't have the a hundred and fifty dollars attached to, uh, coming in. And that's, I mean, I, I see it once a year on, on basketball stuff too.
I do come in and look, have a key fob, and once in a while walk, and sometimes I ran into students who were unsupervised.
That is clearly in here.
And, uh, I don't really want to confront them, but I know I've run into that in the past, because I do come up and, I like when I do walk and I do use the weight room.
Um, which, I mean, that should show up on the fobs, right, because I have to use the fob to get in, so we can see.
Yeah, it should be on the cameras, too.
So, so like if Alec uses his dad's key to get in, and, and he's not, you know, he's supposed to be there with it, and it's all...
Supposed to be super, adult's supposed to be super.
Yeah.
Well, like, this morning I came in to use the weight room, and the gate was closed, but the door to the main hallway was open, so it's kind of defeats the purpose of the gate being closed, if that door's open.
Well, I, I know originally, like, I mean, ultimately, when I was younger, it just used to be a key, not a fob, right? So I was in the gym every night by myself, shooting, and I think the idea that a fob was, because I've already, I've already argued this, because I like where you're at. You had the fob to know, well, then stuff got vandalized, and then we charged people who weren't vandalizing, and it's like, well, isn't that fob telling us, and the camera's telling us who's in there vandalizing? So my whole thought was, is the taxpayer, he pays to keep these doors open, if the least we can do is let them use the weight room? They're on camera, we got fobs, and at a hundred and fifty dollars, that doesn't cover what they break or mess up or cleaning for janitorial staff, so...
But it makes somebody think, hey, you're using my fob, son, daughter.
Yeah, but if you're using it illegally, you're on, we know it's your fob and your camera, it doesn't mean you're on camera, it's time. I don't mean to talk about that.
It's just one of those things where, I mean, maybe it's a discussion point in a, in a future board meeting, where we can talk about, you know, what we, what we want. Because I, I mean, I agree, like vandalism, if that's going on, one way to prevent that is to increase the charging admittance, but, you know, you're really only hurting the one person.
And I know one time the person that was doing it, a hundred and fifty dollars, it was just like, fine, take my money out, I might always still continue to do it, so... Does it really, depends, depends how you look at it, I don't know.
I mean, if we... We have a lot of community members that I think would use the facilities if, if it was more open.
Great, I'm sure.
And it's kind of like a community center, like this is our hub, so, you know, we keep them in our town, but I also understand the whole concept of can't be a free-for-all. I mean, with students in, in the weight room unsupervised, that's a, a huge concern. Yes, that's a big concern, and I know we had to kick some boys out this summer for coming in without parents, so we, if we know about it, we'll, we'll do something about it, so... Yeah, just give us a call, and we'll, we'll make sure that they're held accountable to that.
And I think we have a call in to Dave Porter, that camera in the weight room always, it's down now, and it keeps going down, so I don't know if there's a...
I know they came and looked at it.
Wire something.
Or anywhere.
Yeah. Yeah, there's one actually in it.
So it would get covered, like we put up a towel, or like when football was changing and stuff, I think just some of the moving of the tile.
And the moving of the camera, probably.
Yeah, and so it just, it seems to just come up and then go down, come up and go down consistently, constantly.
Yeah, so just for what it's worth on that one, anything else from the three thousand series in there, because there's, I mean, there was a lot of reading. Um, I did mention a couple of things about, um, like accepting donations up to five thousand dollars, and that was something that we, we took a ten thousand dollar donation, so we'll, we'll do better. Just maybe run it through the foundation on all of those. No, I didn't see anything else in that, I mean, in any of those policies.
You need a motion to take my D. A.?
No, we'll, we'll... They'll check legal, bring it back next month. And we can approve that new policy next month with that stricken, right? Okay.
Okay. Uh, are you considering taking action regarding the hire of Julie Bellinger as special education teacher for the elementary school?
Julie's been working here as long as I've been working here, she's a really quiet gal, um, so, uh, if you haven't met Julie, she's got a heart of gold, um, she's been working on her degree for quite a while, uh, for special education. She'll be on a transitional for the next two and a half years, temporary, so, uh, this is a measurable, we got lucky with this, um, and hopefully we can keep Julie as long as possible, but she'll take the role that Ms. Bloom Camp was in before.
So they have a program to the, through N D E that someone who's a para and has completed more than forty-eight hours towards their degree can apply for a temporary certificate. She had to pass the praxis test, which she did, and actually that certificate just came through this morning. Thirds.
Well, that's awesome, the, the kids won't be...
And she'll get, she'll have basically two and a half years to complete her degree.
That's really fortunate.
Yeah, that is, that's awesome.
I would make a motion that we hire Julie as special education teacher for the elementary school.
I will second that.
Put her in special education.
Well, um, I have a contract to sign after.
Okay. Motion in a second, roll call. Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Borges.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernst.
Yes.
Uh, review consider take action regarding the annual board Lakeville Public Schools.
Typically, this is done in December, we did not get our, um, official school rankings until the, the later part of December, so our official school rating, I want to be as transparent as possible on this, is great. Oh, or I'm sorry, um, is good. Is good. We will change that to say good. For the past three years, we have been in the great area, we have stepped down to the good area. When you look at, with the categorization for good and great, uh, the state says that sixty percent of kids must perform at proficiency on the state assessments in grades three through eight. Uh, we were a point away from the sixty percent. But that's one of those things that, you know, I want to make sure that we're very much aware of, our kids are, um, with, with new and more kids, slash high populations of special education students, we can, those, those numbers can fluctuate, and if you have a class of ten with a special education population of six, it's going to be difficult to attain the sixty percent to make your school a great school. I'm frustrated with it, with going backwards or, um, into its, into a kind of lesser, um, categorization as a kid's school. However, our staff is doing the best they can to, to make sure that our MTSS is working on those kids that, um, are on the borderline of passing the state assessment. So we're doing everything in our power to make sure that we have interventions in place, so kids are shooting for, um, for the goal of, of passing that, you know, sixty percent of the class. Um, you know, we can hang our hats on our, our kids doing well on the ACT, uh, this last year, uh, we had a great group of kids taking the ACT, but we can do better, um, and we need to, we need to make sure that we're, um, shooting for the stars as far as our assessment goes. Um, and part of MTSS talks about what are you going to do, and how, how do you know, so every time we test, whoever's on that bubble needs to have interventions to ensure that they are not in that bubble anymore, that they're moving up and not backwards. So, uh, part of our jobs as instructional leaders are to make sure that our, our teachers are coming to school every day with high-quality lessons, they're in front of great curriculum, and they're passing their assessments. So I'm, I'm kind of wearing this one as a, if, if we're not a great school, why aren't we a great school, or why aren't we an excellent school? And what can we do to make sure that we do that, um, those practices to make sure that we are a great school? Um, so that was a, that was something that was just frustrating, um, for us, uh, but at the same time, you know, we, we, we know our students and where they're at and where they're going to perform. Now we just need to bump them up if they're close. So that's a, that's a tough one, so any questions about, uh, the A-class classification being good, uh, please, please direct those to me, I'll be happy to talk with what we're doing to, to improve that. Um, we also have some, some great things going on in our school as far as our, you know, our, our after-school, um, plans. Last year, we had a bunch of kids that chose to go the two-year route, um, and then some kids that went to, uh, the four-year route, before we had a couple of kids go and join the workforce. So we, we have kids moving on to, uh, higher education, uh, there was a significant amount of them that went to the workforce last year, that went and said, hey, that's not for me, maybe I'll just go into, to something different. So those numbers will change. Um, as our student population goes on that first page, we, uh, we're, we had plus-two on the kids, but that does not include preschool, we're not putting preschool on those numbers right now, just because we don't want to inflate the numbers to say, but yeah, we also have, we're plus-eighteen kids, we're, we're really plus-two kids. Um, under district finances is also the, we just provided through the district as well, uh, we added in a, um, state aid this year as well, I believe, uh, so that was a, a new thing, uh, that, that had kind of come up at, at the budget hearing or, uh, one of our budget meetings, well, you guys are getting so much more state aid, we just want to be transparent with that, with those numbers, so everybody knows, yeah, we, we are getting more state aid than we have in the, in the previous four, five, six years even. Uh, and, and those numbers will, you know, be directly, um, related to our option kids too, so, uh, we're kind of happy as far as that goes. So receipts, expenditures are page two, uh, just the district finance stuff is just, generally speaking, levy, teacher-based salary, valuations and those things. Then the last one is kind of our ACT results, our N W E A results, and then our, uh, N S C A S results. There is absolutely zero great way of showing N S C A S, and that's on the last page. Uh, they changed the N S C A S from a three-digit RIT score to a four-digit RIT score, but the, the RIT scores don't make sense as far as passing anyways, and there was no reliable way of showing that other than a, a grid fashion. Um, so we're doing great things within our classroom, but if you look at individual kids that are, um, that are out, kind of, so like, uh, an easy way to describe it is, like, in our eighth grade, we have a couple of kids that are scoring just like through the roof on our, on our N S C A S assessments, they're, they're in blue, they're higher than what the average are. But we also have in that same eighth grade class several special education students and kids that are just not performing, uh, whether they moved in here when they're in sixth and seventh grade or what. Uh, but the scales aren't balancing out to be, uh, where, where we need them to be right now, so we're diligently working on making that better. So, um, the RIT scores are also complicated to read because they use a different RIT score for math than they do for reading, so it's, you, you can't even say, hey, a twenty-three fifty-one's a great score, it's just... It's just a number. So without knowing the individual kid and their, and their RIT score, it's kind of hard to, to read that value. But I think as a school board, what, um, what we need to say to our patrons is we have great teaching going on in our classrooms, we have pockets of really excellent testing going on, and we need to do better, and we know we need to do better across the board as far as, uh, our scores on the state assessment go in grades three through eight. As, as far as our ACT scores go, um, you can kind of see, if, if this year we put five kids on our ACT wall, I think it's a, a great accomplishment for our school, we will have five of them that go up this year. But those five kids can't make up for the three or four kids that are scoring twelve and thirteen something in the ACT. So our, our ACT plan at the high school, um, we know we're getting kids in front of the tests, but now we need to get every single kid on there, so we're going to get our ninth and tenth grade kids to take the pre-ACT this year, so we have numbers on every single kid, and we can kind of make those adjustments as they go, so if we, um, if we know that so-and-so ninth grader is scoring a twelve on the ACT, we, we got to do something about that, um, and, and that's what we saw this year, uh, coming in from our ninth grade kids is, you know, their ability to score at college entry level might not be where it needs to be right now, but we want to track them over time, but we need a hundred percent of them, so that's, we're going to do the pre-ACT in the building, um, for ninth and tenth graders, so we can say firmly, we know, compared to these other ninth graders, these other tenth graders, here's where they're at as far as their, their national cohorts go. So that'll hopefully adjust our ACT to the, to the good when we get to the eleventh grade. So lots to, lots to consider as far as academic achievement goes, uh, but we're not satisfied with being a good school, is what I'm trying to say, we, we definitely want to be a great school, and missing it by one point really sucks, because we, we can't make that up, like, next, this next year will still be a good school, no matter what we do on the assessment, because it's locked in for three years. So we'll be good, 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 good. It's a, it's a pain, yeah.
Well, I appreciate your attitude about it.
I do too.
Yeah, and there's some other things that are frustrating too, that they take in effect, one of them's attendance, and they're, the way they recognize it, if a kid's not in school for whatever reason other than a school activity, doesn't...
Chronic absenteeism.
They're chronically absent, so if you have, if you, so you have kids that take bereavement, that have to go, we excuse them, but the state says, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the other frustrating part is that...
Chronic absenteeism, Lila has a knee surgery and misses...
Three weeks.
Three weeks, she's chronically absent.
Yeah.
Clearly, the healthier job doesn't matter in the state. Or, or the health of others, I mean, if you think about kids with communicable diseases, like, of course you tell them to... Those are tough, but, you know what, I think the motto needs to be, um, if not, why not, instead of just admiring the problem. Because we, we, we can do a lot if we just embrace it and just say, we didn't do good enough, we need to do better. Um, you know, like, I think with some transitions in our, um, in our day-to-day, like the high school, adding them to study hall, um, and being a structured study hall, you're failing English, get your butt to English class, get help in English, get tutors in English, and I think we're going to do...
I think this tutoring thing is going to show a lot of improvement and help somewhere.
As a...
I'm very happy to hear you say that.
Yeah.
As a highlight, we had two students last semester, and this kind of just shows you the, uh, it can be done, we have a sophomore that passed all of his classes this last semester.
Junior.
He's a, actually, he's a junior, he's a, he looks like a sophomore. But, um, it's just hard work, and him attaching to the teachers and making sure that, um, that he got done what he was supposed to get done, and that's the, that pays tribute. Another girl, um, she came, her dad came to the school, amazing story, he came in and said, I thought you were passing all these classes, I went to every one of your classroom teachers, not because of parent teacher conferences, it is just like his day off, she passed all of her day classes too. So that, that component is also something that we are, are needing now more than ever, is that parental involvement, um, you chose to come to school here, now do it, um, come actually buy in and be a student here for us. So it's, it's not just a number on the page, it's like, you belong here, let's get you to pass all these classes, and, so we have some really shining, um, shiny moments as well.
Good. Do we need to approve the annual report?
Well, and we'll send this out with the newsletter as well, uh, just want everybody to know that, like, we're not hiding behind a, a downgrade, we're, we're really into it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we need to change the great to good?
Yeah.
Cause that wasn't, that was twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four was good?
Yeah.
We, we have one school, I think our overall district was good, I think we, we have one school at this very.
Yeah, I think it was a little level six, seven, eight.
We can change that tomorrow.
Did it make?
Okay, yeah. I'll second.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the annual report as presented.
We're all second.
Thanks, we're all.
Roll call. Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Mr. Weidemann.
Yes.
Mr. Venge.
Yes.
Mr. Boardes.
Yes.
Mrs. Earnest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman. Review considering taking action to approve Sarah Beckman and Kayla Wells as board members of the Public Schools Foundation.
Um, we had a couple of people that wanted to move into Sydney, she serves as our treasurer, did a great job for us. We just, we did get some new people in on the board and this is part of.
And, and younger people.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is great.
And younger people.
I texted them and said, thank you, it's great seeing you.
I think both of these people do a great job for us.
I would just approve that one.
I'll second that. Roll call. Mr. Weidemann.
Yes.
Mr. Venge.
Yes.
Mr. Boardes.
Yes.
Mrs. Earnest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker.
Yes.
Before we go on, did I see something about Wendy getting her degree, library degree?
Yes, she got her degree, yeah, she's yet to pass her practice, so she's kinda holding off on that until her practice gets, uh.
Okay.
Done, so we'll, we'll put that on the.
Please notify us when that does happen, I would greatly appreciate that, thank you. All right, informational items, N A S B Legislative Issues Conference, Lincoln, uh, January twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. How are you doing, David doing, is anybody else doing?
I'm, I've got a board meeting now, weekend, but I've got a meeting to.
Don't you have it?
No, I have a, I have an A S B board meeting in Lincoln.
You just come over to that the next day?
Right, but I have an eye appointment in North Platte on Monday for the thing, so I'm picking my eyes.
Okay.
Sorry.
So David was telling you that, okay. Is anybody else wanting that one?
I mean, I don't think so.
I might skip on that one for the nurse one this year. Uh, just, I, I'm, I'm their scholarship committee this year, so I'm gonna go to the nurse one, so their legislative will be in February, so, so I'll hit that one up.
And the N A S B Board Vice President Retreat is currently in February.
That's right, buddy.
This is vice on my sheet. Um, I will, when is that, you, you know?
Um, I don't, uh, I believe it's in, in February though.
Okay, I'll have to look at that too.
If you wanna go to the, to the president's, I think you can.
They have their president's circle meetings every once in a while.
Yeah, so it's kinda like.
All right, uh, the next.
Under influential, I was, oh, wouldn't talk, uh, Roll had an announcement for me.
I'm Molly.
I'm Molly?
Well, I talked to Matt and Ryan about it, uh, that, that, I was, I was thankful to be reelected. When I was reelected, things have changed for our family and I've, I've got my hands full to the point where, being to resign from this wonderful board and, uh, this wonderful staff, I couldn't be more proud of where you all are at. And you're the school that I'm so grateful for. I feel like it's been, it's been, and, uh, I can hang around till March. I plan to, yeah, my whole development.
So, um, for, for us, what that means is I think we probably just need to start putting out feelers for folks that would be interested in being on the board. Um, I, I mean, it's, I think the, the board we have right now is fantastic, so, um, really just stay on it. But you completely get it, so I think we'll probably open it up to applications and then, um, hopefully we can interview some people either in February or the, or even the March meeting. Um, but I'd like to kinda hammer that down as, as quickly as possible.
We can't do anything until after formal approval of his resignation.
Oh, okay, so.
So, I think, um, I, I checked with John, but when Roll could talk to me. Notification to us was the biggest thing, so we can start talking and thinking about who may be interested in filling that position, can you remember that?
Can we tell people in the community?
We can talk to them now that he has four million formations.
Well, thanks, Roll.
Thank you, Roll.
We, uh, we had some crazy times there to start on. I appreciate that you were on the board.
But I tell you what, I never did regret, uh, there, there was some tough times, but it still was, probably the most interesting thing I've done in my life, really.
Which is interesting, right?
And, and many ways fulfilling, so, um, and, but, you know, what a great board serves that, so. It makes it pretty easy. Went to a lot of meetings earlier on and here lately, and we never go any, uh, and I, or, uh, trainings. And, uh, the trainings are good and, uh, it's, yeah, I, I wish I had the time to do it, but, uh.
You have a grandbaby to take care of and.
Thanks, Shannon. And you do what you gotta do, but I, I have never felt better than, I mean, Matt, well, I saw it tonight about, uh, taking both the bull by the horns and saying, no, we're not gonna be a good school. I echo what Chad said and Charles, a great right-hand man to Matt and the rest of the staff. I guess I just don't have any to say about anybody and I'm a freak. Um, yes, any, how you're.
Appreciate you.
Sorry, I won't be on the budget anymore.
I was wondering, I was like, Roll would not walk away from that project committee.
That's why I volunteer.
But on the, on the plus side, I think that the budget is a collective effort though, so.
Yeah.
You still, still want you to.
We still have your phone number.
And I think that, that's an important thing to, to say is it, it doesn't have to be just a school board. I mean, ideally the budget's our whole hopes and dreams, but we're often need people to say something about it.
I usually consider myself more of a hindrance than a.
No, but.
Should, should, uh, there ever be a time when you want me to sit in on a meeting, especially a budget, I guess, that, the more voices we are.
Exactly. I, I think that's the general theme, it's just the more voices we can have, the better.
All of them.
Okay, the next regular meeting, I'm assuming that is probably scheduled February tenth, right?
Right.
We change the date? Can we change the date?
How far out in advance do you need to do your work schedule?
Two, three months, three, three months. But they just changed our scheduling in at the beginning of the year, so my days got shifted again. Uh, do we have anything with school wise, February eleventh or twelfth?
Both are open.
Both are open, would you guys like to do it on February eleventh? Tuesday, well, I guess.
Right now, yeah, but can be fluid, cause that's an open, if we get weather, that's a possible open date, but that, we can set it and we can.
Or we can change it later.
I know Janelle likes them a little bit later, would it be better to go to the twelfth?
The twelfth is free and we, it only schedules, and I like it, if it's an emergency.
I just know she likes them.
I just read that policy, you won't even have nothing Wednesday nights, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that too.
Do we wanna go Wednesday?
The students won't have it.
It gives Janelle another day for bills and stuff like that.
It's a, yeah, it's really.
It's very early in the month on the 1th, so.
We, we felt it doesn't come in oftentimes until the Tuesday after, anyways.
The twelfth, the twelfth, let's set it for February about four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
All right, so the next regular board meeting on February twelfth, fourteen. Any other informational stuff? Need a motion to adjourn? I'll second it, since somebody else is thinking of, roll call. Mr. Venge.
Yes.
Mr. Boardes.
Yes.
Mrs. Earnest.
Yes.
Mr. Rushman.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumaker.
Yes.
Mr. Weidemann.